Is everyone in?
Yeah.
Haley?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, everyone. Welcome to this June 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We are at 7:01. So after roll call vote, I will go ahead and get started here. Mr. Kindermans.
Present.
Mr. Swaim.
Present.
And Mr. Fayya.
Present.
And Ms. A. Chris Morris present. Fantastic. Let's go ahead with our 7:00 PM Concord Center for the Visual Arts. They've asked for a continuance about discussion to the July 13th meeting. Haley, do we have anything on that agenda yet?
Yes, we do. We have quite a bit. So, uh, 7:40.
7:40. Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
My.
Mr. Fayya.
Hi.
Ms. A. Chris Moore. Hi. Great. Alright, so we will see them July 13th at 7:40. Looks like we have three minutes. Do we want to go ahead and do the minutes? Anyone have any comments? Are we all set?
We're all set.
Great. Alright, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of 4:13?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of 4:13.
Great. Great. All in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Fayya.
Hi.
And Ms. A. Chris Moore. Hi. Um, I guess we can do election of officers. I thought you guys voted me chair while I was gone.
Yeah, we voted for for a term of five years.
First for five years. Yeah, I kind of thought that would be. I'll make a deal. I'll do it if I don't have to be at the July meeting.
No, I'm actually on vacation in July.
Yeah, I am too, actually.
Yeah, me too. That's what I meant. I meant I'm on vacation. So I guess, well, if two of you are gone, then there's not enough of us anyway.
Fine, great, right. Makes makes August older.
Yeah.
A little harder, much harder.
Um, alright.
July 13th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that that week.
And Theo, you're out that week?
No, I was just kidding.
Come on, man. You almost got us all off the hook there.
Yeah, but that's that's that only postpones it. It only postpones the damage.
Oh, July 13th. That's gonna be a tough one. Sorry, we're just waiting. By the way, I should tell you that we're waiting till 7:05 because we can't start the next hearing until seven. We hit 7:05 exactly. So, alright, we'll keep it. Keep it in your head. We'll do election of officers at the end. But, um, you know, what favors can I get out of agreeing to be chair again? Alright, I still show 7:04. Someone let me know when they see 7:05.
Who has a fan watch?
I got it. Fantastic. Alright, so our 7:05 hearing, Elizabeth V. Cody Revocable Trust. Who is here for that?
Hi, I'm here for that.
I cannot see. Can you introduce yourself?
Yep. Hi, my name is Nathaniel Gataldo, and I'm here for 300 Ministerial Drive. I'm from Stamsky and McNary.
Great.
Alright.
Yeah. Do you want to share a screen?
Yeah, I could. Yeah, if it's a. Okay, good. I can do it. Alright. Right. Alright, so, um, I was in a little bit in the work area, but, um, so like I mentioned, this is for work at 300 Ministerial Drive and, um, I'll try to be straightforward about the scope of work. This is for alteration of the floodplain. So there are a couple of resource areas on the site. There's a stream that goes behind the back lot line. So the site's within the buffer zone and the floodplain is the kind of dark, heavy dash double dotted line. It's at elevation 127. It's across most of the property. This lot was recently combined with the one next to it. And it's kind of pushed up close to where the existing houses. So the scope of work they're putting in addition on the house. In addition to that, they're doing some landscaping, things of that nature. This project already run before the, um, NRC and an order of conditions has been issued. As part of the NRC process, the engineering division reviewed the floodplain calculations. So that is as they're showing the plan and they found them to be compliant with the bylaw. And like I said, an order of conditions was issued, which, you know, demonstrates that it's also compliant with the Weather and Protection Act. It's so the filling is basically from the addition. So the addition is going partially in the floodplain. And there's just a little bit of grading outside. So the dotted area is the area that it's filled and that is 59 cubic feet. And we're proposing some grading next to the house here. Very limited space for the grading, but there is plenty to make it work and to make it compliant. We're providing 97 cubic feet of compensatory storage. That is 165% of what is filled. So it is greater than the, 1.5 to 1 ratio that the Concord local rules require. That's really the gist of it. And I really have too much more to add, but if there's any questions or comments, I would be happy to take them. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we received the letter from Elizabeth Hughes on behalf of the planning board and the planning board voted unanimously to approve this. It, like you said, the NRC has already issued an order of conditions. Let me throw it to the board. Any comments? Theo, I'm thinking you might have them.
Um, well, it is. It is a compliant plan. I like the fact that that's, you know, the compensation is right adjacent to where the filling is. And that's, that's, that's always good. So.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, I am going to go ahead and open to a public comment. Because I'm on my phone, I can't really see everyone. So Haley, help me out here.
Yep, I'm looking.
Anything?
Nope.
Great. Alright, let me go ahead and close public comment. I thought the planning, the planner's letter was great. Explained everything that had happened. Like Theo said, it's compliant. I have no issues with it. Any other comments from the board or can I get a motion?
I thought this, I'm aligned with the planning board's recommendation as well. And I think there were a few conditions.
Yeah.
That I was supportive of, so. I moved that the, we approved a special permit under zoning by law section 7.2 and 11.6 for the Elizabeth V. Cody Revocable Trust construct in addition with 59 cubic feet of fill and 97 cubic feet of compensatory flood storage within the floodplain conservancy district at 300 ministerial drive with the conditions as recommended by the planning board.
Second.
Great. All in favor, Mr. Fayya.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. A. Chris Moore. Hi. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much.
Great. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Great. I still can't see everyone. I can't. Now I can't see anyone.
Yeah, but we're right at 7:10, so. You can go.
Um. Let me see if I can unmute her.
I figured it out. Yeah, I mean, I know I'm being kind of stupid about it, but it's pretty complicated on this little iPhone. Anyway, um, 7:10, Jim and Laura Davidian, who is here? Laura, I see you.
I'm Jim too.
Oh, hi. Um, do you guys, are you presenting for yourselves?
Yes.
No, Steve's here.
Oh, Steve, go ahead.
Great. Hi. Good evening. My name is Steve Hart, Hart Associates Architects. My office is in Belmont, but my family and I have lived in Concord for more than 25 years. Jim and Laura Davidian of 345 Thoreau Street are also right there on your screen. I, uh, shall I share my screen? I'm not quite sure how to do that. Do I just?
Haley should be able to give you Billy to it.
I can share. One moment. Would you like the floor plans and elevations first or exist?
There's two site plans, please.
Sure. One moment. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
So 345 Thoreau Street sits at the corner of Thoreau and Laurel Streets. It is a house that was built in 1906 and it is sits on a lot that is currently nonconforming. The minimum, it's resident zone A with a 40,000 square foot requirement and the lot is 17,735 square feet. It is nonconforming for another reason, and that is if the current house does not sit within the front yard setbacks, of which there are two, since it is a corner lot. We are here seeking a special permit to construct, to remove the shed you see on that plan and construct a two car garage with a storage bay that also has a connector to the main house, the existing house. The proposed garage comes no closer to Laurel Street than the existing house, just less than 30 feet. It is conforming in every other regard, area and and floor area ratio, gross floor area. I think it's important to point out that this lot is the very edge of zone A and across the street up and down Laurel Street is zone C, where the front yard setback is 20 feet. And consequently, I submit that this project does conform to the neighborhood standard. It's an anomaly that it's a different zone. So we could go to the floor plans. Thank you. Uh, this is a just the title sheet, perhaps the next sheet. So these are diagrams showing how we are showing that we stay within the gross floor area limits as well as the 50% increased limits. In both cases, we are below the maximum. It's just a graphic representation of that. The next page shows the proposed floor plan. It's a two car garage with a bike and trash can, storage bay to the left, an unheated link to the main house on the right. And a storage loft unfinished upstairs. So these are, the important elevation is the one facing Laurel Street. That's across the bottom, the existing house on the right and the proposed garage on the left. And the next page is the remaining elevations of the new garage, the far side and the back side. So I think that is it for drawings. I believe that's all I need to describe at this point. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. I have to say I, your submission was very helpful and very well laid out. So thank you for that. Uh, let me open it up to the board. Any questions, comments?
No, turn me.
Good.
See, that's how good your submission was. No, it was very clear. The fact that you're not going any closer on the lot line. It seems like a sensitive design. I think your points about the neighborhood character are are right on track there. And as far as I know, we didn't get any comments on this, although I will open the public comment. Haley, that's right.
Uh, yep. Let me just check real quick.
I think that's correct.
Yeah, no, no public comment. Or sorry, no, I don't see any hands raised, I should say.
Oh, I haven't. I haven't opened. Well, let me go ahead and open a public comment. Sorry, I meant any, have any letters been submitted?
Oh, um, I don't believe so.
No.
No, it's nothing on the website.
Great. Okay, so let me go ahead and open the public comment. So Haley, sorry, I'll make you look one more time. Yep. Uh, alright, I will go ahead and close public comment. Um, any other comments or can I get a motion? Actually, I should ask Paul, is there anything you want to add?
No, Elizabeth, I don't have any time.
Great. Okay.
So, so the only thing I want to add and need, I actually went by the site to today. And it's funny, I didn't know that this was right in the edge of the zoning, zoning district because the house across the street, not across Thoreau, but the other one, they have a garage that was sitting right about that same distance. You know, my driving by, I guesstimated that at about 20-ish feet. So, um, in that regard, I think the point is pretty clear that this addition fits within the neighborhood character.
You know, the other thing I would say is, you know, this is consistent with it staying no more nonconforming than the existing house. And even though it looks like there's space to put the garage within the setbacks, I don't think that is a good design and would lead to probably more impervious area because you'd have to have a much bigger driveway to get there. And so I think this is a much better solution and I'm in favor as well.
Yeah, thanks, Robbie. That was exactly, exactly what I thought at any, why, why don't you push that garage back? But, you know, then, then you get just more pavement.
Right.
Right.
Which is, yeah. So, yeah.
Great. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for Jim and Laura Davidian under zoning by law section 715 11.6 to construct a 1,015 square foot two car garage with storage bay attached on existing nonconforming dwelling with a front yard setback of 29.3 feet at 345 Thoreau Street.
Second.
Great. All in favor, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Fayya.
Hi.
Ms. A. Chris Moore. Hi. Thank you very much. Great. Okay, I've lost chat. What time are we at?
We're at 7:18, so we're beautifully on time.
Beautifully on time. Alright, let's go ahead to our 7:15. Keith Huss and Stephanie E. Fitz. Mr. Huss?
Yes, I'm, uh, this Kevin Keeler. I'm chief designer for Brady Built Sun Rooms. I'm representing Keith and Stephanie Huss.
Hi, go ahead.
How you doing?
Good.
And is moving along very quickly. I'm not used to that.
We try to be efficient and fair.
I'll say, I'll say. So Keith and Stephanie hired us to install a sunroom structure to enclose a proposed lap pool at 225 Elm Street. Now, the pool's being installed for its therapeutic benefits, and I would like to share the screen if I could. That's a possibility.
Yeah, Haley can do that for you.
Yeah, if you can't find it, I can, I can serve.
So I want to start with this. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the layout and and I want to be clear, this is not being installed for recreational use. And in custom designing this, we made it absolutely as small as possible for the building requirements. At the, at this stage in their life, the doctor says they need a lot more exercise and they like to swim laps together. But since COVID and and their busy schedule, that has become very difficult to do. And so what they want to do is have a lap pool so they have easy access to an exercise pool area that can accommodate their busy schedule. And and like I said, in in working with them on this and and discussing the challenges related to the lot and to zoning and things along those lines, we, we, we reduce the size of this multiple times during the design process down to the absolute minimum that it can possibly be. Proposed structure right now is 15 by 39. And you see here that there's not even an area around there for to to put like lounge chairs or a table or anything along those lines. Now, bear with me a second. Um, so. Okay. And sorry, I'm getting used to how this works. There we go. And you can see that?
Yep.
So it's proposed to go on the left hand side of the home. And it's designed to blend in with the, with the look of the house on that side. And everybody in, well, they would think this is the best location on the property for the, the structure and the neighbors all agree with them. It's a pretty, the house sits back pretty far from the street and the structure would not even be able to be seen from the street. Now, in doing the legwork for this, we discovered that this is in a residential A zone that requires a 15 foot setback, side yard setback. And because of the structure fit 4.8 feet into the side yard, we, we would be needing a variance of 4.8 feet in order to be able to proceed forward with the structure. Now, did, oh, my show, the next slide here, sorry. And so put up the plot plan. Okay.
I think if you can't get it, we've all reviewed it.
Is the plot plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so this was a, this was part of an original parcel that was the Brook School. And, um, and when they subdivided this parcel, you know, I guess the best way to describe it is they just kind of created lots in a, in a gerrymandered way around the existing structures. And in doing so, they created an extremely odd shaped lot, the choke point where the house is, that would make it virtually impossible or nearly impossible to put a, any type of addition on there that doesn't require a variance. And by the only option they have by zoning right is to put the addition on the front of the house in, in the front of the house. It wouldn't be, actually be able to be attached to the front of the house if we'd be freestanding. But in, in doing that, it's going to destroy the look of the house and or significantly and negatively impact the look of the house. And also, the last one, I won't pull it up if you've already seen it, there's going to be a, a row of established trees that would have to be removed in order to be able to put, to do that. And the homeowners would, would like to avoid doing that. Stephanie and Keith, but, but they definitely intend on doing the pool enclosure one way or the other. The neighbors have all written letters because they have met with them. They've discussed it with them. They all unanimously agree that this is the best location for the, the room on the house.
Yeah, we saw this.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, I know, I know that board does not grant variances lightly and for a very good reason, and I'm well aware of that. But we feel that in this particular situation, that this rises to the level of the requirements under the variance zoning law, a bylaw 11.7, which, because of the incredibly unusual shape of the lot and the literal enforcement of the dimensional requirements described in section six of the bylaw would involve a substantial hardship because of the highly irregular shaped property.
Yep.
And then the last thing.
Yep.
I'm sorry, and the last thing, and then I'll wrap it up. I'm sorry, I'll make it very, very quick. I certainly don't want to read all the neighbors' letters.
No, we read them.
No, you did? Okay, so I just wanted to sum it up with Reagan Lynn Kremers' letter, which is the, the next door neighbors that would be mostly impacted by this, that feel that this is also an extremely good location for the structure.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let me start by saying that I made a call to Paul, the building inspector today and said, are we positive this isn't a, there's no conformity here that we could make this a special permanent and not a variance? There is not, which means this is a variance. And as you pointed out, the burden on the variance practitioner is extremely heavy. Really, variances are only meant to deal with particular situations of land, how land is structured. So I understand your point about the pinch point being created that unfortunately does not rise to the standard of being able to create, grant a variance. In fact, you've defeated the variance point already by saying that you will locate it at the front of the building. If you can't get it at the back. So that is not to say whether or not we agree or disagree with the location or that it's better or, or worse. It's that we do not have the legal ability to grant this as a variance. Let me throw it open to the board if anyone has anything else to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought the, the record was helpful in, in getting me to a good place on substantial detriment and, you know, the intended purpose of the bylaw and special permit factors, but the substantial hardship standard and the variance. You know, the bar you got to meet for a variance. I couldn't quite get there.
So can I, can I say a couple more things? Just out of here? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I guess my feeling is, my first question would be is, why would you feel that you don't have the legal standing to grant this? Because I've ran into very similar situations like this in multiple towns before in Commonwealth and they granted the variance.
Let me, let me throw that question to former town council here, Mr. Swaim.
Well, I happen to agree with what you have said and what Robbie has said that, and I looked at this pretty carefully to, in the code, I went back and actually outlined the code once again. And in my experience, both as former town council and as advocate in the plaintiff's situation, I think I only got two or three variances over 30 years. I don't, I agree with you. I don't think this rises to the standard of a special circumstance on the share, shape of the lot. I have trouble personally with the substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And so I personally would have a, and although I'm not voting member tonight, I would have a hard time voting in favor of this were I a voting member.
And basically, something else, you know, if, if this were the standard, then everyone would come in and say, you know, my lot goes a little this way, this way, and you should vary, you know, give us a variance. It should be an extraordinary remedy to wave, to, to grant a variance. And if your lot is completely unbuildable, it drops off a cliff, whatever happens in the middle of the lot, that, that's the kind of thing. And I also think it is, it's physical. It's not about where the boundaries are drawn for the, for the zoning. So I will not get there. I'm telling you right now, there's no way that I will get there, that this meets the variance standard. And again, it's not a personal, uh, what I think about where the pool should be. It's about having the legal ability to grant it. I appreciate other people might have granted variances, but I will not get there. Um, any other comment? I'll open it. And I, we read all the comments and understand it. Let me go ahead and open a public comment. Any public comment? Alright, I'll close public comment. Again, I tried. I called Paul to see if there was a way around this being a variance, but there is an end. That's, that's what we're going by as the law. Anyone other, any other comments? So I guess your options are to withdraw. Paul, what else? Might withdraw or have us vote on it? In which case, I mean, either way, doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, either or. Yeah.
He won't be able to apply again, but I, you know, nothing's going to change in the law about this anyway, so.
Three times soon, yeah, no.
Well, he, if he, am I correct, Paul, though? And Elizabeth, if he withdrew, having in mind there might be another way architecturally to replace that pool in the approximate location they would like, but to avoid the variance problem, that would make sense for him.
Yeah. That would be another applica, that would be another permit. Like right now, they're applying for variance. They'd have to come back and if, if they apply for special permit, it'd be different anyway. Am I correct, Paul, in your reading?
Yeah, that'd be correct, yeah.
Well, I don't think it makes any difference. I mean, it might be easier if you withdrew. I mean, there's, I don't, I don't know. In case something changes with variance law in the next, how long are you barred from applying again? Once we do it?
I believe it's two years.
Yeah.
Correct.
So if anything changed in the next two years, I guess it would be better for you to withdraw and apply again.
Yeah. So, yeah, I guess we would, we would be inclined to withdraw the application.
Okay. I appreciate that. It's, you know, I'm sorry. I know it's not easy to hear it, but it is.
Well, it's just a shame that, that the, that the neighbor's opinion of their own neighborhood is not, doesn't really weigh in this, which is unfortunate because they, they all unanimously agree in the neighborhood that this is, is a good plan. Um, which is unfortunate because they, they all unanimously agree in the neighborhood that this is, is a good plan. And for them not to be able to execute it, doesn't seem kind of fair, to be honest with you, but.
I, I'm, I don't disagree, but I, that it, it is the law, so. Um, all right, so having withdrawn, thank you for your presentation. Um, I think that's all we need to.
I think you may need to, I think you'd want to make a motion to grant the permission to withdraw.
Can I get a motion?
So moved. So moved, second.
Second, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Hi.
Mister Faya?
Hi.
And Ms. Akris Moore, hi, thank you. Um, I think that's it, except for election of officers.
What, what do you, so what do you want to do, uh, Elizabeth? Because I'm, you know, we sort of said last year, uh, that we're gonna rotate it. Uh, which so the last several months have been, uh. Trying to get my head around that, uh, which is, and I'm fine, and I'm fine with that.
It's up to you. It's honestly, I, I, it's gonna sound crazy. I don't mind if you don't want to do it. If you do want to do it, great. If I, I'm gonna be sitting here anyway in July, so, um.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, I'll do it. Well, the, the one thing is, and that's might sound, uh. Uh, you know, there, there is the potential that a comprehensive permit will be filed, uh, sometime in the near future. I think we'll, you know, the town will drop under the ten percent.
Right.
Um, and I wouldn't mind sharing that because I've been involved with quite a few of them. Uh, but on, 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 uh, you know, obviously on, on the, at that point, on the, on the.
That's so funny, because as soon as you said that, I was gonna say, oh my God, please do it, because I don't want to share during that, so.
Yeah, I know, and the other thing is, and I don't know whether we could do that, whether, whether you could rotate, rotate, right, swap it off. Uh, but now, I'll, I'll do a, you know, I'll, I'll, I, I can do it.
Fantastic. Um, does that bump me to vice chair? What does that do? I think last time I did that with, um, Jim, but I have no idea.
Um, no, well, if, if you rotate, I was secretary last time, so then I'm, then vice chair, and then now I'm chair. So that would.
I'd bump down.
Secretary and, and Ravi and the Vice GSC.
Great.
Right.
Sounds good to me. Robbie's not gonna be here on, on July anyway, so.
Hey, it's, it's a Zoom, uh, Robbie, it's virtual, right? It's virtual.
No internet.
Oh, right. Oh, she's going to the South Pole, right? I forgot, okay. Um, okay, great, so, uh.
So Thomas, Thomas, are you gonna be here in, uh, July?
I believe, yes.
No. That was our last.
I, I just, actually, I hope that we have a quorum in July because otherwise August will be really ugly, right?
Oh, yeah, good point.
So.
All right, um, great, so what do we need to do here to, uh, elect officers? Someone, one of us make the decision? Do we move our?
What, what we've done is that, you know, I nominate you or, or Robbie, or I nominate you for something. And then Robbie or, uh, you, you know, so we'll.
I think it goes around Robin.
I, I'd run Robin, or we have a slate, I mean, just all vote on that slate.
Can we just say so moved?
Yeah, yeah, or, or we can do like the, like the Republican, uh, party in the House and have like twelve rounds of voting.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to do that. I'd like to caucus for a while in Iowa and then we can do all of this. Um, all right, great, so, so moved.
So moved.
Or wait, no, Ra, I guess I'm still chair, so you move, Robbie, you second.
Oh, I second.
And, and then all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Hi.
Mister Faya?
Hi.
Ms. Akersmore, I, it's been a pleasure to serve as your chair and.
You, you stay, just stay along and, and, and you, you, your turn will come, uh, come.
Uh, yeah, it seems like.
And, and it, it, the funny thing is, we're, we're all just by ourselves here, right? Uh, meeting adjourned. Um, is that, is that, you know, I was, there's this variance here. Um, I know we don't. Give variances lightly. But I, I was like, yeah, I'm there, so, uh.
With the variance?
Um, it's a variance, yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm no lawyer, I'm no lawyer, right? So, so that's, that's, you know.
I, I, actually Robbie, when you said you were partially there, I was kind of shocked because they defeated it by saying they could put it on the other side. There is no substantial hardship. I mean, Theo, I think about it this way, if you really let everyone do that and say, well, the way these lots were drawn, you know. You'd undermine the entire zoning, you know.
I, 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 I hear you. I am, and I, um. Um, I, um, and, and you're, you're, you're right on that. I just, you know, I guess my, my standards might not be that high.
My guess, you know, my guess is all of us agreed that the location where they wish to put it. Probably is a better location. That made it more difficult to come up with a negative vote. And so you may have, you may have been influenced by that somewhat.
Yeah, you know, I know, I, I, I was, you know, and I'm a site planner, so it's like, no, I think that's a great location, so.
If you start doing that, everyone comes before us for variances. Well, you gave these guys a variance, you know, you gave these guys a variance. And it becomes essentially a special permit and it shouldn't be that.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying that since you're gonna be chair.
I was just, and as I was, just if I'm gonna be chair, variances, I'm gonna need some help.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so because I'll.
I wasn't here. The one that you granted that I think was the right one to grant was, uh, off of Chestnut Street, right? The one on the Main Street.
Yeah, just off Main Street, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, whatever, that.
Island Ave, maybe.
Highland, yeah. Because that one, the topography dropped right off, right? So.
Right, right.
I, I wasn't here for that, but I mean, the way I think about it is someone went and divided these lots up on paper and then you get to the actual lot and you're like.
And that's the height, that's the height issue that's, I don't, is that even a variance anymore?
That's a permit.
Oh, you're right, that did go away.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah. Yeah, we, we gave a variance there, but yeah, it's now away anyways.
Yeah, I, I don't think.
Don't open us up to listen to every variance in the world. Like, Paul, you tried to convince these guys not to come, right?
I did, I did, yeah, yeah.
So.
Twice, three times even, you know, they were adamant that he was pretty confident he would get the variance, you know. And, uh, I, I don't think you guys could have allowed this variance after refusing the, the person on Garfey Road a couple of months ago. Garfey Road had no other option but to put the garage where they, where they wanted to put it, because it's took the topography shape a lot. There was two hardships there alone. So.
Yep.
They, they couldn't physically put it anywhere else, you know, so.
Hey, Tom, as, um, really, a really, a good lawyer and researcher, maybe, um, you come up with something for Theo. That shows like, uh, a little. Be great to have something.
I would be happy to send Theo a little memo on variances. Theo.
Then it's all of us.
Yeah, in all seriousness, I probably handled two to three, four hundred, uh, zoning hearings of my career. And I, if I got more than three approved variances, I'd be quite pleased with myself. I don't think I did. You just can't get them. And I advise any number of clients, sorry folks, don't even waste your time. You will not get it. So they are really hard. And the case law, if you read the cases, it's very difficult. And so. That's the problem.
It's actually, Tom, if you wouldn't mind, it really would be good to have something.
I will put something together for you guys.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Um, I'll see you in July.
And I, uh. I think you guys, may I, one other suggestion I have unrelated to the variances. The, I had called Haley earlier today to find out, and she's gonna find out, the, uh, when an applicant asks to extend. As, as the art, conquered art folks have done. It strikes me, there's a point at which you would say to someone, gee, no, we're not gonna let you extend. You can withdraw and start all over again. I come, I come from the position that when I was on the other side of the table. You would often get rev, revved up, ready to go, you've generated legal fees or engineering fees. And then whoa, it's, you know, they extended for another month or two months. And so once, I never had a problem with one extension. But I found that if, even though it's in my favor sometimes to extend. It is a hardship sometimes on the applicant and the lawyers, engineers and the neighbors. Because they have to keep coming back thinking it's gonna be heard. So I would suggest the board, the, the board may want to consider. How many extensions someone can get before having to withdraw and they can refile. So I just raise it to you.
Yeah, uh, al- although the, the, the point here is, I think, is that these guys are stuck in the planning board, right? They just can't get out of planning board. Um, and so that's why.
Why can't they get out of the planning board? I, I don't.
Because they're having still some issues with, with, uh, Haley said, right, with parking and traffic issues. And they, they need to resolve those first, you know, and then, and then they can come to us. And I would assume that hopefully. You know, they wanted to be out of there, you know, a lo, long, long time ago.
They've been working with an outside consultant to, to address the parking issue, so that has taken up a bit of time. And, you know, working with the planning board on that, so that's been the main holdup for this.
It's an interesting point, though, on other applications where the, the opposition has to keep going along with this and incurring whatever fees they're incurring. So I, I take the point, Tom, something worth thinking about. Um, but you're right, in a case like this, you can't, we want to give them the time to get through planning board, right? So, um, what's the cost? And all, all the cost would be in refiling, would be the filing fee, right? Which is, what is it?
Two hundred.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe that is, you know, worth considering. How many have we given these guys? Has it been?
This is at least a third or the fourth now.
Yeah, I think number four, yeah, at least. No, actually, uh, no, I, I think even more. More than that.
That's interesting. Um, I mean, then also, they, they do it at the last minute, so you don't know whether you're gonna have, we don't have, know whether we have to review everything. I just kind of keep my fingers crossed that they're.
But because, I mean, planning, planning board is on Tuesday, right? So if they come out of planning board on Tuesday night, they want to be heard by us on Thursday night and be done.
Maybe we discuss it next. If they do ask for another continuance, maybe we kind of. Think about, have this discussion then.
Just, actually, can we just, can, can we just continue, we close the hearing now? Otherwise, we should have continued him to August, you know, like July is full.
Oh, yeah, good point. Um. Yeah.
Well, when, when Elizabeth gets back, because she couldn't be with us tonight, she may know what some of the practice has been in the past. Although you guys have been on the board long enough, you would know if there's any policy about how many extensions.
You know, it's funny, it's always, I don't remember having a limit. I mean, it's always been, there's such big things that I'm always kind of happy when they get pushed out. So I never really thought about it that way, you know, like, oh, good, we don't have to hear the middle school tonight. That's, that's, you know. But, um, so I don't think there's been any discussion about it.
No, I don't think, I mean, we've never had him this, this, I mean, at three-ish, I think, but that's about it.
I think it's, if we're talking to Elizabeth about, Tom, I think it's an excellent point. Um, I think I'm talking to Elizabeth tomorrow. I can bring it up with her.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone, and I will see you next month.
Bye bye.
Take care, bye bye.